Move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certify that to each of, to each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in this meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Shelley.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Quigg, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye. Motion carries seven zero. Items from closed meeting. Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, and retirement as presented in closed meeting, and permitted by Section 2.2-3711a1 of the Code of Virginia.
I have a motion.
Make a motion, please. I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Shelley. Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in recess to reconvene at 6:30. Motion by Mr. Twig, and a second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here. Motion carries seven zero. We are back in open session. Welcome, everybody, this evening. Like to remind you guys to silent or turn off your cellphones. I like to welcome and thank everybody that is here. We have a large number this evening, and I like to ask everyone to please stand so Mr. Twig can lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason just for all.
I would like to now ask for a moment of silence dedicated tonight for Melissa Mansfield, a thirteen-year veteran teacher from Battlefield Middle School who passed away on October 4th after losing a three-year battle to cancer. Melissa was nominated as a First Year Teacher of the Year in 2005, was recognized as an exemplary career switcher for the Spotsylvania County Public Schools at the Teacher Quality Forum in Richmond in 2006. She was Mentor Teacher of the Year in 2013. Melissa leaves behind her husband, Michael Mansfield, and daughters Molly, a sophomore at Duke University, and Jillian, a junior at Cortland High School. Melissa will be greatly missed. We have no public hearing this evening. Move to the consent agenda. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening of the minutes of the September 11th, 2017 regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Please note the informational items for the November 13th board meeting. We'll move on to the instructional highlight, 10.01 Thornburg Middle Schools' Belacanto? Did I say that right? Mrs. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Thornburg Middle Schools' Belacanto will perform Sing To Me by Andrea Ramsey. This group consists of nine young ladies, and they are directed by Erica Foreman.
Sing to me something of sunlight and gloom. Sing no more of sorrow and gloom. Sing no more of the wilds' light and shine. Sing to the beauty and brightness of life. Sing to me. Sing to me. Sing of the blossoms that open as spring. Of the sweet flowers grow. And the lawn like it's green. And the winter is round about me. There are bright summers and springs yet to be. Sing to me. Sing to me. Sing to me. Sing to me.
Thank you, Thornburg Middle School. And on to 10.02, LAMP and PAWS Program. Mrs. Flannard.
Thank you. LAMP, which stands for Literacy Advancement Mentoring Program, and PAWS, which stands for Partners in Achieving Wilderness Success, has been in existence for eleven years. The program was initiated by some former principals and has continued every year with the support of the respective schools as well as our Transportation Department. The LAMP program matches students from Riverbend High School with first-grade students at Wilderness for the purpose of assisting with and developing literacy skills. The PAWS program partners Riverbend students and Wilderness students in grades two through five to provide assistance with any subject. Both programs offer mentoring support.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. My name is Michelle Trecle. I'm a teacher at Riverbend High School, and I'm also the high school coordinator for the LAMP program, and I have been for the past nine years. With me tonight is Ms. Daisy Cox, Assistant Principal at Wilderness. Ms. Jennifer Fiore, she's a parent volunteer at Wilderness and has been running the LAMP portion of our program for the past three years. And I have two student LAMP mentors from Riverbend, Grace Pugmire and Carly McGuire. LAMP, short for Literacy Advancement Mentoring Program, was created in 2006 by Megan Copley, then counselor at Wilderness, Diana Wellerman, a Wilderness parent, Ms. Carol Flannard, principal at Wilderness at the time, and Mr. Stephen Fitch, then principal at Riverbend High School. That first year, funding was obtained from an idea grant through the county along with a target grant, and that allowed them to purchase materials needed for the program. Wilderness was awarded additional idea grants later, in later years, once the PAWS program, which is the partnering achieving, partners achieving wilderness success, was added. In the past several years, though, any consumable materials have been purchased through Ms. Copley's budget as well as parent donations. Approximately eighty-four students each year for the past eleven years have been touched by this program. The LAMP program is specifically for first graders with a focus on literacy activities. Students are selected by their classroom teachers, and lesson plans are designed for the Riverbend mentor to read a book to their Wilderness buddy, and together then they complete some activities that are related to sight words and other literacy skills. The books selected are geared to be interesting to them, to try to encourage a love of reading, and also at the same time highlighting character traits and self-esteem. The PAWS program was created for second through fifth graders who are also selected by their classroom teachers. Mentors go through individualized assignments provided by their buddy's teacher designed to help with reviewing skills taught in class, studying for tests, working on correcting assignments, or playing learning games. Both programs meet on Thursdays in the Wilderness cafeteria, and we typically run from mid-October until the week before spring break. One of the key components of both programs is building relationships. Riverbend students must submit an application along with two teacher recommendations that speak to things such as attendance, academic skills, and their ability to work with others. Once this group has been selected, they're paired with a Wilderness student, and they remain together for the duration of the program. This truly allows for a special bond form between the two, and Ms. Copley would often mention that the Wilderness students would start bugging her on Monday, "When is my buddy coming?" Several Riverbend mentors were once Wilderness students themselves, which is fun, and this year we'll have had two former Wilderness buddies become mentors themselves. So we're going to turn this over to a couple of the students, let them kind of give a personal view on this.
Good evening. I am Grace Pugmire. I'm a junior at Riverbend High School, and I did attend Wilderness Elementary School. I participate in LAMP, the Literary Advancement Mentoring Program, and last year I was placed with a first grader named Emma. Our usual routine was, we would start off reviewing her sight words, and there were certain lists, and they would progress in difficulty, and as she mastered one list, we would move on to the next one. And after that, she would read to me a couple books from her bookbox, and we would talk about the character and the story and problems and how it overcame, so instead of her just thinking about the words, she could start thinking about the meaning of the story. And then I would read to her a book, and we would do an activity. Two activities I remembered was, we read a book on friendship, and she drew a picture of her and her friend, and we wrote down activities and reasons why her friend was her best friend. And then we read a book about self-esteem and why it's amazing to be who you are, and we, I traced Emma on a really long piece of white paper, and we colored her in, and I wrote all the things I loved about her, and she wrote the things she loved about herself. And after that, if there was time before I had to leave, we would play a game. Sometimes they had to do with sight words or spelling, and sometimes they were just fun games to play with each other and another group. The experience I had in LAMP was amazing. By the end of March, I realized how big of an impact I had on a first grader. She was always super excited to see me every Thursday. She would be peering in her seat, waiting for me to walk in, and as soon as she saw me, a huge grin appeared on her face, and she sat down and showed me she was ready to begin work. And if I got there first, she would walk in with her bookbox and look around and make sure I was there, and again, the same grin appeared. And to this day, she still remembers me. I have two siblings who go to Wilderness, so I was at the back-to-school picnic they had this year, and as I was leaving, Emma saw me, and she ran up and gave me a big hug and told everybody that I was her high school buddy, and I saw her every Thursday. And it was so rewarding to see how I touched a little kid just seeing her every single Thursday. And since I went to Wilderness, it was great to give back to the school that gave so much to me, and I'm glad to be part of LAMP again this year, and I hope it's as rewarding. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carly McGuire, and I'm a senior this year at Riverbend, and I also participated in LAMP last year. I got paired up with a first grader named Jalen, and at first, he was super shy, and he did not like talking to me at all. He was never liked to say his words because he was so scared that he was going to get them wrong and that I would make fun of him, but really, it wasn't like that at all. So each day, we would read a book, we would do an activity to go along with it, which he loved so much. Going along with what Grace said, he loved the activity where we got to draw him and write all the things that we liked about him. That was his favorite, and he brought, he carried around his poster and showed everybody in the cafeteria because he was so proud of it. Then we'd go over sight words and play a game if we had any time, which he also loved. Each time we'd meet, he'd talk a little bit more, and by the end, he was calling me his best friend. At first, he would, his favorite thing to do was just tell me about his week, so the first thing for at least five minutes, he would tell me all the crazy things that he did, and how much he loved Power Rangers, and everything in between. And he always told me that he couldn't wait for next Thursday so that we could hang out again, and I could say the same.
And I had the opportunity to hear from a few Riverbend students who have graduated. One was Mary Kate Brigadier. She graduated from Virginia Tech this past spring and said her experience with LAMP is what made her decide to get involved with the Reading Hour and AmeriCorps. She's currently in Spain where she's helping teach English to third through sixth graders. She's scheduled to return to Virginia in May and hopes to pursue a nursing degree. There's also another student who graduated from Riverbend. His name is Grant Rankins, and he went on at JMU to volunteer for a program mentoring underprivileged kids. And he said that the experience was very rewarding, and the foundations of the program continue to influence him today. While at JMU, even though he didn't major in education, he became a part of this mentoring program where he actually was able to get a scholarship if he meets the special requirements. So we have had both of those students move on and have impact well beyond their high school years. And I got to talk to one of our own Wilderness students by the name of Gavin, and he is a second grader this year, and this is what he had to say about LAMP. He said it was fun, and we got to read in front of our buddies. We also got to play games like Sight Word Candy Land and Cars Sight Word, if we got finished with our work, though. We also got to play a Bean Bag Toss word game. He said I was happy that I got to go to LAMP each week, and even at the end, he told me, we had a party with our high school buddies. So. And Ms. Fiore is here to answer any questions that you may have about the program. Our volunteers are instrumental in making this program work, and we appreciate the support that we get from transportation, I think, is what Ms. Flannard or somebody mentioned at the beginning. So if you have any questions for us, Ms. Fiore, and the rest of us, I guess, can help answer those.
This is kind of a side benefit, I think, that I have in mind, but I was impressed with the two students, both of you, who talked about your own experiences. And as you know, there's a real shortage of teachers in the United States today, and I wonder if this experience relative to the two of you, in fact, and maybe other places, whether you're finding some of the youngsters are, the young people are going into education, or is it too soon to ask that question?
Well, to take them off the hook, I will say, on the LAMP application, there is a section that asks why they want to do this, and I do get several students who say they're interested in becoming teachers and specifically elementary school teachers, so that's a big draw for them.
Well, especially in reading, it seems to me, anyway, learning means doing, and everything that you've talked about, you get a lot of doing, and I can see where that would really be beneficial. So thanks for having the program for us.
Ms. Shelley.
I just have a comment. My children were at Wilderness when LAMP started, and I remember how awesome it was then. My son had a buddy, I don't know if he was formally in it, or if he just wanted to have a buddy, because somebody did come and talk to him on occasion as well, but, and I can't remember that far back, but I do remember the impact even way back then that this had on the students, and I do know some of my children's friends that participated as LAMP buddies when they got to Riverbend. So it's a great program, and I'm so glad that it's still going.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take an opportunity to commend our Riverbend High School students. You've had the opportunity to experience something that most people take decades or maybe even a lifetime to figure out, which is the greatest compensation in life is when you can do something for someone else. And the experience and the passion that you shared with those young people, I'll never ever forget it. So I commend you, I salute you, and it is true that it is better to give than it is to receive. So I thank you for inspiring and sharing of your time with our young people. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Flannard, let's move on to 11.01, Fine Arts Recognition.
Thank you. We are celebrating the outstanding student artwork from two of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Riverview Elementary, art teacher Ann Fleus, and Salem Elementary, art teacher Jeanne Carr.
Moving on to item 11.02, Superintendent Award.
Thank you. The October Superintendents Award winner for outstanding visual art goes to Kiana Keys. Ms. Keys is a kindergartner. Ms. Keys is a kindergartner at Riverview Elementary School, and her artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month, and we would like to thank Ms. Keys and her art And if we have any family and friends in the audience, could you please stand to be recognized? Thank you, Ms. Shelley. The American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association gives an award every year to the top five school districts in every state for their involvement and support in helping them raise awareness and donations to fight heart disease, our nation's leading cause of death. This year, out of 227 school districts in the state of Virginia, Spotsylvania County Public Schools was number five in the whole state last year. This evening, we have Ms. Marjorie Churchborne, Youth Market Director of the American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association, to honor the school board, Dr. Baker, and Dr. Gregory, for fostering a partnership in helping to make heart healthy in Spotsylvania schools and communities a priority.
Thank you all so very much. My name is Marjorie Churchborne. I started with American Heart and American Stroke just a few years ago after losing my parents, three days after Christmas. I lost my dad to a sudden heart attack, and my mom, who was with him, to a sudden stroke that same day, just a few hours later. I decided at that moment, that very day, that I wanted to get involved, and I wanted to help make a difference. I learned that heart disease is our nation's leading cause of death for both men and women, but it can be eighty percent preventable through education and lifestyle changes and choices. It is only through our partnerships with the schools that we are able to get our information tools and resources directly in front of the students, staff, and families at the schools, and it just takes one person at each school to step up and offer to be our heart partner. Thanks to the extraordinary help and support of Dr. Baker, Ms. Grant, Dr. Gregory, and Ms. Amber Balaico, I have been able to connect with at least one person in almost all of our Spotsylvania schools, and we are working on reaching out to find someone in the remaining schools hopefully this year as well. Thanks to their dedication, help, and support, Spotsylvania is now the fifth most supportive school district in the entire state of Virginia, dedicated to partnering with us to fight heart disease. Your wonderful administrators, teachers, nurses, and families have made a tremendous impact towards our mission of building healthier lives free of heart disease and stroke. Thanks to our partnership, American Heart has been able to provide physical education equipment and CPR training tools to Spotsylvania schools, and you've helped us raise awareness and vital donations. Together, we are stronger and improving and saving lives. Thank you, Spotsylvania schools and Spotsylvania school leaders. You are all truly heart heroes, and I thank you from my heart for all that you do.
Moving on to 11.04, Virginia Quality Recognition of Spotsylvania County Public Schools Preschool Programs.
Thank you. In the spring of 2017, seven Spotsylvania County Public School preschool classrooms were rated through Virginia Quality. Virginia Quality is a statewide program to enhance preschool quality and one of early education's initiatives that's facilitated by Smart Beginnings Rappahannock Area. As of July 31st, 2017, Virginia rated 912 preschools classrooms in the state of Virginia. The highest possible rating is a five. Seven of our preschool programs participated in Spotsylvania, and they were rated as follows. Two classrooms in our county received a perfect rating of five. There were only five classrooms in the entire state to receive that rating. Thirty-seven of the 912 classrooms received a rating of four. Two of our classrooms were in that category. And the four hundred and, 409 out of the 912 classrooms received a rating of three, and three of our classrooms received that rating of three. We had no Spotsylvania classrooms receive a rating lower than that. And this evening, we have Dawn Miller, Head Start Coordinator, along with preschool teachers and paraeducators, Melissa Brink, Kim Brookman, Lisa Buchanan, Tanya Davidson, Michelle Ellis, and Amy Malardy are here to be recognized for their impressive work in our Spotsylvania preschool classrooms. In August, Senator Mark Warner notified Spotsylvania County Public Schools that we were being awarded the 2017 Best Communities for Music Education Award from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. The award recognizes outstanding efforts by our teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of our curriculum. and community leaders who have made music education part of our curriculum. This recognition is a tribute to our school system's commitment to providing high-quality music education for our students. And I believe we do have some staff from our music education that is here to help support this recognition. If you would like to come forward.
Melanie said "I". That was great, Melanie.
And then 11.06, the 2017 VAST Rise Elementary Award recipient.
Thank you. At this time, we would like Thornburg Middle School teacher, Ms. Caitlin Boyle, to come forward. We are proud to share that Ms. Boyle has been selected as the Virginia Association of Science Teacher VAST 2017 Rise Elementary Award recipient. VAST Rise Awards are presented to spotlight the excellent work done by science educators across the Commonwealth. They recognize service to science education in the individual school, the school system, and the VAST district in which they work. The awards are grouped in 12 distinct categories. Each year, VAST selects one winner in each category. This year, Ms. Boyle will be recognized at the Annual VAST Professional Development Institute, which is being held at Hotel Roanoke in Roanoke, Virginia, November 17 through the 18. Congratulations, Ms. Boyle, on receiving this distinct honor and your dedication to our students in Spotsylvania County.
On to 12.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Public Comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time for the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers signed up at this time.
Is there anybody in the audience that did not get to sign up that wishes to address the board? Okay, on to 12.02, we have an amended agenda to include board comments tonight. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make one brief announcement. I want to thank Spotsylvania County School Division, all the teachers, administrators, students that participated recently in our 12th Race Against Teen Violence at Cortland High School. Especially want to thank Principal Conway and his staff for putting that on for us every year as they do in a professional way. And I'm just so honored that we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 people sign up to run. Now, 1,200 didn't run, but 1,200 signed up to run. And we're always grateful that we have an opportunity to put the word out into the community that every life matters and we need to treat each other with dignity and respect. And if we do that, then we'll have a better community in which we all live in. So we want to thank the division for their efforts and everything that they did to support us in that 12th race and a race. From what I understand, Cortland has bragging rights from the high school division this year for winning first prize at $1,000, followed closely in the heels by Massaponics and Riverbend picking up third place. So that was the high school division. The middle school, the honors, goes to Spotsylvania High School. And they came in first place and they'll receive $1,000. Second place went to Freedom, who will receive $500. And third place went to Thornburg, and they'll get $250. And in the elementary school division, the winner was Courthouse Road Elementary, first place, the $1,000. Second place was Cortland Elementary. And third place was Chancellor Elementary. And, you know, we have to figure out a more equitable way to reward them because they're the smallest elementary school probably in the county, and they always have the greatest participation. So we salute them anyway, and they'll receive $250. So I thank everyone for being very supportive of that endeavor. And I continue to be thankful to this division and this community for all the outpouring of love and support that they always continuously provide. Thank you.
Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take this opportunity to put an alert out there to Medicare Retiree Group. Pete Sakar, I didn't have a chance to touch base with you, but we solved the problem, I think. On the website, the website that we have on our cards for the Medicare Supplement Program with HealthSmart, that card says to contact www.hesmart.com. It so happens that when you connect to that site, it says you're not eligible. Don't exist. Group doesn't exist. Talked with a tech support this morning, and Jeremy was a gentleman, and he said, "I think I know what the problem is. We've got a glitch in our software. You should be typing in TPA, Third Party Administrator." I said, "You mean WWW.TPA?" He said, "No, no, no. Don't use WWW. It's TPA.healthsmart.com." And that will connect then to the websites of the person. For all of us that are Medicare retirees where we have our claims, we want to know where do we stand? That connects you to the claims for dental vision and your medical claims. So I want to put the word out there. I asked Mrs. Colbert if she could alert the Medicare Retiree Group, I emphasize Medicare Retiree Group, not the other retiree group, that this website, in order to connect, it has to be the TPA.healthsmart.com. And then the person has access. So with that, that's the alert. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Ms. Palmer?
This seems the appropriate time to thank the Transportation Department. Mr. Forrest was kind enough to give me a tour of the facility. I was, of course, very impressed with everything that's going on over there. But the highlight of my day was riding a middle school and elementary school bus home in the afternoon, and so I bow down to all bus drivers. I had to take a nap after I was done because it was quite an adventure. But the bus driver I was assigned to was a pro. I was so impressed. And I was actually quite moved by the interactions she had with her students. And it just really represented, I think, the best of transportation. You can teach almost anyone to do a three-point turn, but what those drivers bring to the table is a love for students that just really shows. And so I was very grateful for the opportunity and grateful for all the good work that happens in transportation.
Mr. Twig?
Two points. So a long week ago, I was invited to Riverbend High School for their first inductee, two inductees into their High School Hall of Fame. It was a very fun event. And Ms. Rebecca Elliott Berry and Ms. Bailey Hayesen Wilcox were the first two inductees, and it was just fun to be a part of that and to see that school jump into that realm and progress in that manner. So thank you, Riverbend, for pursuing that endeavor. And lastly, a few hours ago, we endorsed and had a ribbon-cutting ceremony introducing our new REACH facility. That was a fun event. About 20 students showed up, past and present, and about 40 parents and staff. We had a great time just offering that building to them, and they are totally ecstatic. They got a lot more than they wanted in those two facilities. We thank Ms. Best Fortune intently for working with that program over its first 12 years or so at Chancellor. And now, Dr. Joe Pisani, thank you for taking over the host job. And we look forward to working, seeing you all, you and your students, support that program. But thanks to everybody, and especially our board here to approve it, and Dr. Baker to chase it for us, and Dawn Upperco as well. Thank you, everybody. So I think that's an accolade. It was fun to see. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
We've just finished recognizing a number of our teachers, and I just want to take a minute and commend our executive administration for establishing an environment that encourages our teachers to excel. And that environment is very crucial, and I think we sometimes forget the leadership that you folks provide, and I want to thank you for that. I also represent Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, and that particular group, more and more, is offering choice. All kinds of opportunities for our young people to move in to explore different kinds of vocations. And they've been off this year to a terrific start. Enrollment is up from last year due to focused outreach and counseling departments and increased promotional efforts by SCT itself. Last week, the Virginia State Fair, might be two weeks now, hosted Career and Technical Student Organization Days. Our SCTC students, who are members of Skills USA, participated in competition at the state fair on October 2, 2017. Our heating, ventilation, AC, and refrigeration team of Jared Bushes and Victoria Nicely took third place. The HVAC, our team of Joey Banta and Nat Berry took first place at the state competition. That puts, again, Spotsylvania on the map with these students. In addition, teams placed in the top 10 in automotive service, masonry, and cosmetology contests. And this is a great opportunity, again, to highlight the skills that, and it's a great opportunity for SCTC to have our students accomplish this way. On the 4th of October, the chapter of SFCCLA participated in state fair competitions and had a banner day placing in the top three in the following contests. The Literary Table, Green Eggs and Ham, third place, White Ribbon. Caitlin Schwinn, Skylar Watson, Samantha Heflin, Crystal Bajent, and Fanta Tulle. And that are the Early Childhood Development II class. In Woodwork, Handmade Child's Rocking Chair, first place, Blue Ribbon, by Michaela Dest Delisle and Dylan Chandler. In the Woodcraft class, a Painted Table, first place, Blue Ribbon, Kenzie Hall and Mackenzie Pope. And under Cakes, Carrot Cake was made, second place, Red Ribbon, by Mary Kate Colors. And it's just terrific to be able to read off such an outstanding list of accomplishments. A great job to all of our students in SCTC and the teachers who prepared them. And that concludes my remarks.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I just wanted to congratulate again, Nye River Middle School. A couple weeks ago, they had their ribbon cutting for, I guess, STEM Lab, this amazing classroom. I don't even know what to call it. They had one, we talked about it before, $65,000 grant. And they had the ribbon cutting for the classroom with all the new technology, all the new furniture, carpeting, everything was paid for. So I want to once again congratulate Nye River for that and the two teachers who are running the classroom, Kristen Oswald and Melissa Feely, for jumping in and getting it going. It's an amazing, amazing facility now in that classroom. I wish I could be there to work with it as well. But just want to again say congratulations, Nye River.
I just wanted to mention that I had the first of two Berkeley District Town Hall meetings at Spotsy High School last week. And we have the second one this Friday, the 13th, at Massaponics at 6:30 PM. And now we will move on to 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Are there any? Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting. And I want to thank Ms. Richardson for presenting to the parents about special education and what's going on in the county. So there was a good turnout, but we always would love more parents to be there. So if you are a parent of a student with an IEP or 504, please start attending the SEAC meetings. They are monthly, and you can find out more about it through the Parent Resource Center or here at the school board office. And then also, this Thursday, I have a food pass course meeting. So if any board members have any questions or anything they would like me to bring up, please let me know. Thanks.
Any more board committee reports? I have Audit and Finance Committee, and the local finance committee met. And we have some actions this evening that were presented and discussed at the Audit and Finance Committee, including the carryover and some CIP roll-forward uses and the bond insurance cost adjustments we discussed. So we will be seeing that in upcoming actions this evening. 13.02, Update on Phase 2 of Planning the Plan by Mosley Architects. Mr. Upperco?
Thank you very much, Chairman Grant, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Mosley Architects has been commissioned by the school division to conduct Phase 2 of the Planning the Plan study. Phase 2 consists of GIS update and analysis of current school feeder patterns and further review of space utilization and potential procedural changes at Massaponics High School. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Doug Westmoreland, who will present a brief update to the board, and he will be assisted by Carl Chafin and Susan Kutsch in that endeavor.
Good evening. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. And Susan Kutsch and Carl Chafin are with... Carl Chafin and Susan Kutsch are instrumental in this study. They are expert demographers, GIS folks, and student enrollment, which is generally the backbone of what we're doing here in the Space 2. So I'm going to give a little bit of an update, but then let them take over here. The goals of the study, as Mr. Upperco just talked about, first thing we want to do is look at the student enrollment projections because they were done two years ago now, so how are we tracking to where we are there? The GIS database, which, as you recall, every student is geocoded to their residence and where they're going to school and what grade level they are, so that has to be updated from two years ago. And then we want to look at the analysis of feeder patterns, which in previous presentations, we've talked about in Spotsylvania is an interesting study in elementary to middle to high school in terms of how those students are zoned. And Carl and Susan will present some very interesting information on that. And then we did go to Massaponics High School to look at that school in particular in terms of some of the issues with crowding, but also student circulation and how students move through the building. And then we'll finish up, and this is an update of a study. It's not the end of the study. So where we're headed with this is some policy for management for future growth. And we'll talk about some of the considerations we might have for that as we go along. Other considerations in the county that are going on as we're doing the study, number one, Cortland High School project, which you'll see a presentation after this one, will increase the capacity of that school from 1,265 to 1,500 students. will increase the capacity of that school from 1265 to 1500 students in the fall of 2019. So there are additional seats that will become available in the county. There are programmatic considerations, i.e. the IB program implementation at Spotsy High, which is in its second year, headed to its third and fourth, as well as potential specialty centers. So those are programs that will move students around the county, away from their zone school, perhaps to another school. Certainly continues to be new housing developments in the county and that will become a consideration. And then out of zone student attendance and we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. So first thing, enrollment projections. So we did a 10-year enrollment projection starting in 2015. So how are those tracking? 2015 number, that's the actual September 30 enrollment of 23,285. We predicted 23,265 in 2016 and ended up with 23,192. That's 73 students less, but more importantly, that's .3% off, which Dr. Chafin will tell you about as close as you're going to come with enrollment projections. So that's a very, very tight number there. When you go to 2017, we predicted 23,377 students. We ended up with 23,413 students, which is an additional 36. Again, .15% away from that projection. So what that tells us is we have some confidence, some high confidence in our projections as they stand, which is a good thing. But we would also say the caveat is every September 30th, we need to be looking at that number because that's what will begin to tell you when those trends change and that we need to react to it. So so far, so good in terms of where we are and we'll continue to monitor that.
Good evening. What we've done recently is we've updated your Geo database. We've taken all of your students and their addresses and any pertinent other information that we want to tag that student with, also the school that they attend. And we've looked at where they're actually zoned. So it lets us look at your students as to where they live and where they're attending. It also lets us look at your existing boundaries with those students and to see how your communities are living in relationship to their schools. I'll give you a really brief scenario. Neighborhoods inhale and exhale children. This neighborhood is aging out and no one has children anymore, but this neighborhood is starting to have children. And so our children, it's not that they move, but where they live changes, you know, every decade, every five years. So these are just things that you can look at when you look at that GIS information. This is your K5 complement. Probably no surprise to a lot of you where your density of your students are. This is your kindergarten through 5th grade student complement. I'm showing yours, your zones and I've tagged your schools so you can see the relationship of the students in the schools. These are your middle school students, 6th through 8th, your middle school zones and I've tagged your schools. Again, probably no surprise to you where your population densities are for those children. High school, again, I've taken your 9th through 12th graders, put your high school zones and tagged your high schools as their building locations. And you can see how, you can look at spatially where these students reside. We also, as a means of moving forward with Planning the Plan, looked at some study areas for potential review as to reducing the overcrowding at Massaponics or the potential relief for Massaponics if it's deemed to be necessary. So these are just some potential study areas that you could look at that are on the outside perimeter of that zone for Massaponics. I'm going to turn over to my partner Carl. He's going to talk about feeder patterns and how he's looked at them from a numeric standpoint and then he's going to turn it back over to me and I'm going to tell you about how I looked at it spatially.
Thanks, Susan. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, good evening. One of the, one of the areas of the study, of this study that we were charged with looking at was the, let's just call them the interesting feeder patterns, feeding from students from elementary to send to middle school, from middle school sending to high school. And I think part of the, part of the issue was some concern about are the feeder patterns overly complex and is, could they be simplified? And as a way of setting the stage for that, what we wanted to do was first of all, kind of illustrate the complexity, the inherent complexity in developing feeder patterns and attendance zones. And this is not just unique to Spotsylvania, this is, these factors are germane pretty much anywhere we have worked and consulted. First of all, something as simple as the number of schools at each level that you have in your, in your school division influences feeder patterns. Obviously, the second one is the location. And I should point out that, that several of these key factors that drive feeder patterns are things you can't control or you can't, it's too late to control now. Of the schools you have, they are located where they are. The school size and capacity is another factor that, that drives decisions related to these Probably most importantly is where the students, the homes, the neighborhoods, where they're located. Again, that's not something you have a whole lot of control over. They are where they are. And finally, finally, at least for this slide, the issue of transportation and road network. That one?
That one.
Other things that get taken into consideration when it comes to attendance zones and the feeder patterns that are derived from them are natural breaks, waterways, railroad tracks and so on. Another issue is on an annual basis, typically how many students from ascending elementary are coming out of 5th grade each year to head to the middle school? And also how many receiving schools, how many students each receiving school typically needs annually to sustain the population of the school? Now, if we could wipe the slate clean, we wanted to give you just one example. If you could wipe this slate clean and start over, what would a clean feeder pattern look like? And here's just one example. If you had a 1,600 student high school, you would want to feed it with a 1,200 student middle school. And you would want to feed that 1,200 student middle school with either three 800 student elementaries or four 600. And in that configuration, you have the numbers of kids feeding each year that, that effectively utilize the capacity of the school and sustain the population. So in an ideal world, were we to start over and have feeder patterns as a priority, there's an example of what that would look like. Now, when we take a look at what, what you all have in the school system, you have five high schools, seven middle schools and 17 elementary schools. So one thing that jumps out immediately is the, the number of schools is not a clean fit. It's just, that's just the way it is. And when you think about the decisions that have been made over the years, for example, if we need a new elementary school, you typically don't look at it from the point of view of what's the feeder pattern going to look like when we do a new elementary school? What typically are their driving forces is which schools need relief? How much relief do each of those schools need? And where are the places we can go in, in the areas served by those schools to get enough kids for a critical mass for a new school? And maybe somewhere in the back of somebody's mind, there is the issue of, well, where will they feed? But job one becomes at that level, at that elementary level, if we're able to do a new school and provide relief, what does that need to look like to provide the relief that That, sorry, there's a glare here. I hope you guys can see it okay. One of the other things that I mentioned earlier in terms of a driving force is the, what are the capacities of each of the schools, the student capacities? And if you think back to that clean feeder pattern model, when we looked at your all's, for example, elementary schools, you have two elementaries that have a capacity for fewer than 550 students. You have three that are between 550 and 650, three that are between 650 and 750, four that are between 750 and 850 and five that are over 850. Just, I hope you get to picture that, that range there, back here to this clean feeder pattern model, you're kind of locked in on a, on a big range with your elementary schools. Middle schools are a little better. The range, as you can see, is, is not nearly as great. But then with the high schools, you have one over 2,000, one between 1,800 and 1,900, one between 1,500 and 1,600 and two between 1,300 and 1,400. So you start trying to put these pieces of the puzzle together and you, and you come to the realization pretty quickly that it's next to impossible to create clean feeder patterns, given the realities that you all have right now. Now, the, our conclusion for the most part was that even though they, they look complex on paper and even though you have schools particularly at elementary level, feeding two and sometimes three receiving schools, for the most part, if you looked, if you looked at it from all those factors that I mentioned at the beginning, it's a pretty good model that you have, given the constraints that you have to work with. Now with that said, we did identify some specific feeder flow numbers that we have brought back to you all to take a look at to say, from the outside looking in, here are some that you at least ought to take a look at. Maybe there, there are probably good reasons that these numbers of kids are being split off, but worth taking a look at to see, is there a way here where we actually can clean it up and simplify it a little bit? And so these are the, excuse me, the elementary feeders where there are a relatively small number of kids and we just have recommended, take a look at it.
Carl, just for us, could you read them because they're just not coming through for folks to be able to see?
Yes, and I'll, if I get my angle right with my glasses, I can read them. So Broadrock, Brock Road, sorry, being from the Richmond area. There's a Broadrock. Brock Road Elementary to Post Oak Middle, there are 14 students, or there were this past year. Chancellor Elementary to Chancellor Middle, 17. Chancellor Elementary to Freedom Middle, 10. Lee Hill Elementary to Battlefield Middle, 18. Riverview to Spotsy Middle, 14. Smith Station to Chancellor Middle, 9. Wilderness Elementary to Chancellor Middle, 12. And Wilderness to Post Oak Middle, 4. Again, to us, these merit further looking, there are probably good reasons, but worth a look. Similarly, at the middle school, Battlefield Middle sent 26 to Chancellor High last year. Freedom Middle to Cortland, 39, and Spotsy Middle to Spotsy High, 27. So there's some food for thought, if you will, for perhaps a way to simplify the feeder pattern to a certain extent. But for the most part, our analysis, we concluded that it, it's pretty good and probably relatively close to as good as it's going to get, given all the larger issues that have to be dealt with in terms of, of attendance zones and feeder patterns.
So Carl looked at it on paper. Carl's old school, in case you didn't catch the, what button do I push to make the slide go forward?
Thanks.
We also like to say that he's the beauty and I'm the brains.
Is that how?
That's the way I like to think of it. Anyway, what I did was I looked at it spatially. Carl looked at it on numbers. He showed you what a good clean feeder pattern would be. So I wanted to look at it with where your zones are and where the kids are. So the first slide I'm showing you, it shows your middle school zones in the pastel colors and then the bright hard red outlines are your house, high school zones. And in, just in looking at that, you can see especially in the upper, the northern part of the county, you can see how your high school zones have been carved out and they don't really correlate very easily with your middle school zones. That's not unusual. This is not unique to you. I just, I point out that those are, the, they don't overlay nicely. The next thing that I did was I went ahead and I pulled your 8th grade students because they're the ones feeding up to high school and I wanted to see where they were. And I also wanted to capture them by their middle school boundaries and look at them as they fed to the high school. So what I did was first I looked at Massaponics and Massaponics can receive between 450 and 500 9th graders. And so I looked at Battlefield Middle, I looked at Thornburg and I looked at Spotsy and I apologize for these pale slides. Battlefield sending last year to, no, excuse me, this year, 287 potential 8th graders. Spotsylvania, 282, Thornburg, 228. And as I said, Massaponics can take between 450 and 500. So you could say that you could pick two middle schools and send them on to Massaponics. So you're thinking, okay, well, this wasn't so bad. It's kind of like doing the Jigsaw puzzle. These pieces fit, okay. So I thought, all right, well, let me move forward and look at Cortland because now we're moving across. Then it becomes a little bit more challenging. Cortland needs a smaller complement of students. Well, you know, in the first one, I thought, well, maybe I'll put Battlefield and Thornburg into Massaponics and now I'm looking at Spotsy, Spotsylvania Middle underneath and I'm thinking, there's 282 students there. I can go over to Freedom for 245, but you can see it's becoming a little bit more complex as we look at those feeder patterns. And just to put a little more complexity to it, I went on to look at Chancellor. And as you can see, again, you know, feeding from Battlefield, feeding from Freedom, feeding from Chancellor Middle, there's not a real clean correlation that would be, oh, well, we'll just put these two here and these two there. So as I said, Carl looked at it numerically. He looked at it straight from the data. I looked at it spatially and again, given what you're doing and how you're accomplishing it, it's, it's a good, a good fit for what you're fantastically accomplishing. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Westmoreland.
So the final piece of this puzzle was to look at Massaponics High School specifically and see if there were some things that could be done to, again, address the overcrowding, but also the student circulation and some of the operational issues there. Carl and I met with Mr. Uppercow and the principal and some of his key staff in July and we would like to specifically commend them for the thought that they've had because they came to that meeting with lots of good ideas and I understand that now even as school starts, they're continuing to develop some of these ideas. So what they have accomplished there is they have reorganized the classroom assignments based on creating grade houses. It was, it was interdisciplinary where you had all the science in one area, all the math in one area, all the English in one area, the more traditional. But the grade houses, one of, one of the great advantages of that is the circulation of students through the building becomes much simplified. And that's through their study and I'll show you that, well, let me go do that. So what they have done is they've gone to Massaponics and created a 10th grade house, a 11th grade house, 12th grade house and a 9th grade house. Now they aren't quite as clean as that because you've got kids taking different levels of math and different levels of, of foreign language. But in general, those, that's where those students will hang out. The other thing that was done is there was a study done on a block by block attendance of Massaponics High School. So if, if the overall was about 2,000 students, there were never any more than 1,850 students in the building and as small as 1,800 students. So where are those students? Well, they're at the Tech Center, they're at the IB program, they're at the Governor's School. So on a block by block basis, there, there really is never 2,000 students at that high school. That was very interesting. So options moving forward, the other thing that we asked the question as we walked through the school and how many of your lockers are being used? Can you guess what that might be? 10%, 20%? Very few lockers are being used at Massaponics. I suspect that's probably true at most of your high schools. That is the trend we're seeing all over the state of Virginia. Now, what does that really mean? You've got lockers there, they're not being used, but what happens particularly in a main corridor where you've got lockers on both sides and you have some, those 10% of students trying to get into those lockers, all of a sudden, a 12-foot corridor becomes about six feet where people can go back, back and forth. So particularly in several areas, there are strategic areas, we believe those lockers can be removed. The biggest problem is they're on concrete pads, so there would be some renovation required. But that would greatly free up some of those main corridor areas. So that's something that, that we believe should be studied more. Second thing is continued reassignment and repurposing existing spaces to create additional instructional spaces within the building. And they've done some of that already and it really relates to option number three, which would require some capital renovations, but of existing spaces, to more efficiently use those spaces and essentially repurpose those spaces. For instance, your teacher work rooms are designed 20 years ago and they've got individual stalls that are built where teachers go, which virtually no teacher uses. So we believe you- So we believe you could carve two instructional spaces and a more of a planning area, work area for teachers, still have teacher resource areas, and gain instructional spaces within where those teacher work rooms are. There's an old shop in the back of the building that's used by one history class. It's a 4,000-square-foot history class. It's a special history class, and they do some cool things back there. But, you know, repurposing some of those spaces could really add, we believe, eight to 10 instructional spaces within that building, which would also help that situation. So these are all options, and they're all strategies to look at in terms of MassiPonics, both in terms of the study areas and as well as some of the physical and operational things to make MassiPonics work better. So the final thing, and again, this is where we're headed, and we're not recommending any of these issues. These are, to create a policy for managing current and future student growth, we believe these are considerations that you need to think about in terms of policy development. You know, what are the triggers for initiating rezoning? And at what point do you really tackle that? Policy about feeder patterns. I think Carl and Susan both laid out a pretty strong case for, you're virtually never going to have high school to a middle to an elementary. So what is the policy about that? What is your policy about using trailers for capacity? When something gets overcrowded, you know, should there be a policy for when that needs to be stopped and other options taken? Continued coordination, and there has been a lot of coordination of future housing developments within the county. The difficult thing of that is, you know development's coming, you don't know necessarily when it's coming. There might be 220 units coming on, and it might take 10 years to develop. And that leads to this fifth item called satellite zoning, something Dr. Chaffin is very familiar with. But for instance, if you're in a middle of a crowded school or a full-capacity school, and you know you've got 100 units starting to be built, a satellite zoning would say, just from the get-go, before anybody moves in, whoever moves into that's going somewhere else, because we can't accommodate them in where they are situated or in the normal district. Again, it's a strategy, it's not a recommendation. That's just one of those tools that you have. And then out of zone attendance, you know, what is the policy on that? You have policies on transfer, you have choice based on programs, I believe you're going to continue to add on to that choice based on programs, as well as choice based on capacity. So you can see there are lots of moving parts to all of these, but those are some of the things that will be considered as we move forward. So I would like to open it up to any questions you might have.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad that you had an opportunity to share with us some of your insights on how current projections in terms of enrollment are going to have an impact on this county in the future. I really appreciate the efforts and the planning that went with MassiPonics in terms of having an opportunity to alleviate some of the problems of overcrowding in the short run. But for this board, we have to think down the road. Divisions are being built constantly, and the old excuse that we used to get was, well, no one will move in them anytime soon. We can see that these subdivisions are getting filled rather quickly, and so we're going to have to be in a position where we can be more proactive instead of reactive. And I'm afraid right now, we're still in a posture of reacting, but for the fact that we have done some planning through you all and your assistance there, it's putting us in a position where we can get ahead of this particular problem. And so, based off of what you know about Spotsylvania County schools, have you developed any plausible or viable courses of action for this board to consider to deal with the future problems of growth?
Well, I think Susan's example of the study areas, which were generally on the edge of the MassiPonics attendance zone, really relates to the question of, in 1900, 2019, when Cortland adds 250 seats, is that the time to look at those study areas and see if some of those study areas might be rezoned to Cortland High School, which, for those two schools, seems to make a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I know they're going to be coming on next. I know they're coming on next. But what I'm asking for is, based off, I see you did a great job with solid facts, great assumptions, but what I'm looking for now is some plausible and viable courses of action for this board to weigh at some point, so that we can make a decision that is able to get ahead of the changes that are going to occur in Spotsylvania County, and we don't have to guess they're coming, they're already here. So I just wanted to find out, beyond the fact-finding, did you have any, or were you planning to prepare any viable course of action for us to consider?
Quite sure how to answer that.
I think that slide, that those four areas, that if I think any of those course of action... Yeah. If, yeah, if I may, I think that, and maybe as you, and I'll just speak to Mr. Westmoreland, the way that you all laid out the data, and I want to, I think that what Mr. Braswell is asking, and let me know if I am correct. I believe you have laid out options, and I think he may be asking, do you recommend that the board considers all of those? Or is there a, you know, based on what you understand, is there a sequence in which the board might start? And I think, really just looking for your professional opinion, on of all the things that you've laid out, where would be a next step for the board based on the results of Phase Two?
Yeah, I think that that's going to take more discussion with administrative staff and us in terms of those options. Each one of these six things have consequences in terms of, and outcomes, and, you know, it might be one of these that solves your issue, but more than likely, it's going to be two or three or six. And the other thing that we were going to bring forward, or any kind of policies that other divisions have developed that might be places to start in terms of how other folks are dealing with that.
Oh, I didn't mean to, go ahead, go ahead. What I wanted to say was, and I appreciate the clarification that Dr. Baker was trying to provide, but I was actually taking it a step further. What I was interested in is the opportunity to war game possible courses of action, so we can find out what are the distinct advantages, what are the distinct disadvantages to proceeding down a path of one course of action versus another, whether it be for high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, you know, is there a process in place, or is, will there be a process in place where we'll be able to war game these courses of action, so we can develop a policy that's viable for this county in the future, based off of the information that you provided?
Yeah, the difficult thing is to predict where exactly that growth is going to occur. So when you do the war games, you've got to make basic assumptions.
Assumptions, right.
What if this thing happens? And that's one thing that the GIS database allows you to do, is to play those games of what if we took this study area and put it over here, what does that do to our numbers?
Yeah, and that's where I was getting to. We have to get to a point where we're able to war game possible courses of action, and maybe in our analysis, we need to consider political considerations for subdivisions that are being built or will be built in the future, and what impact that's going to have on our courses of action. But I appreciate the solid fact-finding that was done, and I appreciate the considerations and assumptions that you made. And now I'm ready to put flesh on some courses of action that can be war game to see if they're actually viable. That's where I was getting at. And maybe I'm asking my question too soon. I don't know the answer to that, and that's why I was presenting that.
Can I extend Mr. Braswell's question? You all, I think, if the board, it becomes the board's pleasure or the board's direction to continue to engage the board in exploring the options that you've laid out through the data, in terms of, as Mr. Braswell calls it, war gaming. I looked at the, and I'm just sharing this perspective with the board, one of the final slides, when you look at all the policy considerations, you know, for developing either a comprehensive policy or perhaps several policies related to, you know, taking those next steps, would the war gaming, could that not occur around the discussion of the board's development of that policy? Would that not take the school board and the staff pretty deep into considering what's that very next step that should be taken by working through, what do they, how do they want to approach it from a policy perspective? Because, just again, as a reminder to the board, the policy that is in place for redistricting for our school board is extremely basic. It's basically, it says, in essence, and I'm paraphrasing, that if redistricting needs to be done, it'll be done by the school board. And so I'm just, as an extension of that, would you all be willing to help assist in that next step?
Absolutely.
Dr. Meyer?
Thanks, Madam Chair. As you've presented this information, it's a lot to get your head around, because it's like when you grab the balloon, you squeeze it here, and it comes out here, comes out here, goes there. And it's kind of like when you're trying to put your hands around some of those attendance lines, as you put some pressure here, it's got to go somewhere, so you're trying to do that. I thought your recommendations or suggestions on reviewing, if we're looking at a feeder system, you know, gives you some direction, that may not coincide with how do we address overpopulation in another area? Which gets to my question. Looking at the GIS map, as you geocoded all the students, have you taken a look at the progression of our current student body, moving it out another year as they progress through? You've got students leaving, students coming onboard. Has that given any indication of whether that, the student body within this confined attendance area is going to become more crowded or less crowded as you've extended it out two years? Say 2019 is our target when we bring on Cortland. So if we were to look at Cortland and MassiPonics, how those two high schools play with one another, how the feeders go into that, is there a possible course of action then, taking that enrollment and bumping it up one, two, three years, four years? You know, does that tell us anything about, are we overextending capacity? Are we going to get any relief in capacity? Because you've got the students coded, now the question, can you do the progression?
Well, and in the original study that we did, we did projections by school.
Correct.
And so, and we have not gone back to those with any kind of an update or any of that. But, you know, if we're thinking out loud here, I guess what I would say first is that, if I understood it, and I think we all understood the same thing, Dr. Baker, right from the get-go, is these early phases of this study were to, in essence, do what we've tried to do tonight, is get the facts on the table. You know, lay out reality in as comprehensible a way as we can. Get our heads around the balloon, and that's kind of a terrible way to describe, but anyway, to kind of all get on the same page, have you all get on the same page to be able to say, ah, okay, so this is, these are the salient facts, and these are the issues, now what? And I think that's where we are tonight, is we hope we've brought you through the rest of this Phase Two here, is that the facts are out there now, and they need to be thought about in order to then move forward in a thoughtful, strategic way. I think the, I'm just looking at the list and thinking about just something as, you know, take one, take the first one. What are going to be, going forward, your triggers for, let's take the MassiPonics-Cortland area of the county, and dissect that from the point of view of, well, where are we going to end up with our capacities, with our feeder schools? What are those populations going to look like two, three, five years from now? And what do we want to see in terms of targeted enrollments for those schools five years from now? And lay that out and say, okay, how could we get there? And maybe the answer is, well, we need to rezone that part of the county. I'm not recommending that, I'm not suggesting that, but that's one answer that's, well, if that answer were to come out on the table and say, that seems like a viable option, well, what's our process going to be for thoughtfully moving forward with an undertaking like that? How are we going to do it? And what do we hope to accomplish? And so I think, I think back to your point earlier of, we may be getting a little ahead of the game here, but what we've tried to do all along is set the stage for you to be able to go forward in a thoughtful manner. And I think that's where we are tonight.
I think I can answer Dr. Meyer's question about the GIS and looking at the students spatially. Yes, you could take and do an age progression or a grade progression of those layers. My concern about that is your transfer policy, because, just because this child lives in this zone and happens to be attending this zoned elementary middle or high, doesn't necessarily mean that this child living in this zone will next year attend their, you know, their next middle. And that's where I think coming back to these policy choices comes into play. The other thing that I would look at, and it's not something that I have researched for Spotsylvania, is the potential transient nature of your student population. What percentage potentially is homeless? What percentage starts the day at one area and ends the day at the other? I would want to look at that before I would take, you know, your grade populations and bring them up each year, just to look at that kind of pipeline. So again, these policies could come into play. Does that answer your question more directly?
That gets at part of what I was after, because, you know, if I was looking at this, I'd want to, before I was to do any changing of attendance lines, I would want to make sure that, how am I using the building? The room capacity, are we using that building to its full potential? And if we're not, what potential do we have? And try to accommodate, which would then set the trigger, then establish a trigger for when we would have to have additional modulators assigned to that building to accommodate that growth. If we know it's coming within two years, then it becomes a planning that we will put modulators there for two years, but during that interim, we need to be executing X, Y, and Z. And knowing where the students are in that progression, restricted by their attendance zone, I think we have to make the assumption they're within the attendance zone, because we can control, to some extent, what we permit to go outside the zone. That we can control. So we start with a controlled environment, then we have to maintain it, or we're defeating our own purpose.
You may recall in the program capacity study we did a couple of years ago...
Correct.
...that each school had, well, some of them didn't, but many schools had what we call opportunities. Particularly a school that maybe wasn't at capacity, there were some opportunities to gain additional instructional space. So the capacity may be X, but it could be X plus 40 if something were changed or repurposed. I do, off the top of my head, what I recall, in the elementary level, there weren't too many of those. I mean, they're being utilized very, very well, but each one of those schools had those, either no opportunities or those opportunities. The kinds of things we looked at at MassiPonics were exactly the kind of things we identified in that study two years ago. That's the physical piece of it, and then the population piece is what Susan just talked about.
I think, excuse me, one final thought. Our work with you all over the past several years, we've learned that you all are very unique, you're doing some pretty incredible things, but you are introducing new moving parts. And that's a good thing. But that further complicates your attempt to be proactive and think down the road, because you have some moving parts, for example, an IB program that has just been introduced in the last couple of years, that is still a dynamic unfolding. Just that one initiative, what impact is that going to have on the patterns of student attendance in your high schools over the next five years? And we don't know, it remains to be seen. It's a neat thing moving forward, but it... It's a, it's a, it's a neat thing moving forward, but it introduces an uncertainty with respect to that one. And, you know, you start putting several of those on the table, and that's where the, that's where the, the moving parts and the changes start to complicate the attempt to be proactive and position yourselves well for five years down the road. And, and I just offer that as an observation, that you all are among the more unique school divisions that we've worked with in the last few years to be stepping forward and doing some pretty incredible things for your kids and your community. It complicates the planning picture, is all I'm saying. And again, that, that's a good thing, but it's something that we all need to recognize.
But that's it, the dynamic of the programs that we have in each of the schools, elementary, special ed. Where we place special ed programs impacts the capacity of that school. And we know that, but that's a living dynamic. But at the same time, we do control it to some extent because we position them where we can serve, that's closest for the students, and we can control the transportation component. So at the high school level, you know, where the programs are and how that building is utilized, you know, all that goes into the dynamic, so.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to what you said about lockers. My two children went through high school, both of them all four years, never used their lockers. I'm sure there are some students that do, but I know there's a bunch that don't as well. But moving on, you had mentioned some repurposing at Massaponics. Any idea on what capacity, if all of those suggestions were to take place, what would that change the capacity?
We are identifying about eight to 10 instructional spaces. So if you took a straight, I wouldn't want to take 20 to one, 25, but if you take 20 to one there, so 200 to 250.
250.
150.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Bray, thank you.
Yeah.
Has the focus been solely on instructional space, or does your study consider things like the capacity of the cafeteria? I think right now, a third of all the Massaponics students are in that space at any given time.
We, we did look at the core capacity in the, in the school, student capacity study two years ago. So we identified those schools that we felt like had smaller cores than the student body could accommodate. I can't recall what the Massaponics showed, but, you know, some of that, again, can be, can be operational. There could be some operational things that make that better. Senior dining areas, for instance, and that sort of thing. So I can't answer your question specific to Massaponics, but we did look at the cores of each one of these schools.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to follow up on something that you mentioned earlier. And, and I think in a way you did answer my question. When I was asking about courses of action, I was looking for a strategic course of action because you've had the capacity to look at our enrollment and project enrollment in the future as to where people live and, and in a variety of other dynamics that you've mentioned in terms of birth rates, et cetera. So I was looking for something from you all strategically, and I think you brought a really good point in that there are some factors that you can't predict. It has to be done at our level. And so probably those courses of action, and I would probably say to the other board members, that's something that we're going to have to aggressively address because we don't have the option to not get ahead of this. We have to get ahead of it. And we're going to have to war game courses of action strategically, operationally, and even in some cases, you know, tactically for each, each building, so that we can get ahead of this growth charge that's going to be coming downhill on us. And so I, I, I didn't ask that question to put you on the defensive. I think you gave me the answer that I needed is, is not expecting really that to come from you all. You gave us the data, that's what we needed from you. You gave us some valid assumptions to work with. We're just going to have to take it a step further and develop some viable course of action, strategic, operationally, and tactically, to get ahead of that problem.
Madam Chair, if I could ask that, you know, we get clean copies of what you presented because some of the information didn't transfer.
Yeah.
And the view wasn't that clear to, to see. And the second piece to that is, I think, you know, my suggestion to fellow board members is that we go back through, Dr. Baker is our superintendent, and come back to us, you know, with what would maybe be follow-up work for these folks and, and for us, as how we war game it or put together a strategic plan. Because we do need to get ahead of this curve. And I think, you know, that, that's something we will, we need to put in the hands of our superintendent.
So I've, I find that contrary to popular belief, it's, it's nice to actually have the numbers because although I can say it in many different ways, in many different conversations, but a lot of people challenge what I'm saying is true. But I just want to make sure that it's a fact now, that at no point in time, after the block-by-block analysis at Massaponics High School, is there any more than 1,850 children in that building. Most of the time, it's closer to 800. So I think that that's, that's an important fact to get out there because people would argue that that is not the case. And that's why we hired somebody else to look at that and see those. I think that it's also important to note, as you said, on that graph, you had five different population centers outlined that are on that boundary between Cortland and Massaponics that would be options for moving, obviously. But I think it's also, as you said, important to note, we have changing factors such as IB enrollment almost doubled this year. And so who knows what it could do next year? We are always pushing our, our tech ed program, and that enrollment is increasing constantly. So when you have factors like that, that of course gets those kids, they might not be, the initial number before they're transported out might be large, but as we said, there's no more than 1,850 kids in that building block by block. So I think that's important for us to know that we're not at like emergency. But I do think making the hallways more easily passable are an amazing option. Some parents were concerned because the rumor got out there, we were taking out all the lockers, and there were parents very upset that, you know, some of their, their children needed lockers. And we said, we weren't taking out all the lockers. That, I mean, but the high traffic areas, and people understood that more. So I think if we just keep communicating with the Massaponics population, let them know that it's on the radar, but by, by all means, with, with factors changing and the Cortland renovation being finished, which is additional 250 students soon, as we'll have that update. We, I don't think we, and then of course, as we know, the new construction coming, I think to react before we have all the information would be premature. But I also think that, in summary, to answer Mr. Braswell's earliest question, I think that Phase Two is complete, which is gathering facts, and Phase Three will be, get some more projections and some recommendations. But I think that we were just wanting, I think we wanted some advice earlier than we were ready for. So I think that's Phase Three. Are we all under the same assumption that that is the next step? All right. Well, thank you guys for that hard work.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank our representatives from Mosley, but I also, just on some of the feedback that has been shared, I do know that they remain willing to assist the school board and, and me as the superintendent in trying to, you know, the, the title of this, planning the plan, so often. And I, I do appreciate all of what was shared this evening by the board. There's, it's hard to be in a quote-unquote sweet spot when it comes to managing growth. You either are so far ahead that you can't really do, do anything because you're waiting for something to happen. But the other place you don't want to be is behind that curve, trying to, to then, you know, put out a fire. And I appreciate too, the, and I know that it was meant in the most enduring terms, what was shared about our, being a very, one of the most unique school divisions that you've encountered. I think one time it may have been, I don't know if it was you, but it said, we're a beautiful mess, you know? There was even a song like that. But I, I think that we are wanting to, and particularly at the secondary level, this notion of choice is not something that we view as just being, you know, sort of whimsical. You know, you just go choose wherever you want to go to school. But that we want to have opportunities available that meet the needs of a diverse group of students across our county. The challenge for us in providing those choices is not only how we are zoned, but our capacity as it pertains to transportation, our geographical span. There's many things that we have, that we want to do. And I would want to recommend to the school board that we may not have the ability to do in, in the short run. But I would be glad, on behalf of this board, to try to work out some workshop time or an opportunity for the board to really have the data in their hands and, and just discuss, you know, have some open discussions about what those next courses of action should be. But I do appreciate you all in providing us with an abundance of foundational data. We also do for the board, just so you know, have the block-by-block analysis. That still could, there still could, and I'm not positive about this, we'll get clarification. The very first thing in the morning, there might be about 2,000 students before they begin to go transportation to other programs. That could also mean towards the end of the day, a few more. And then when students are coming and going near the lunchtime. So we, we want to be real clear that there still can be sort of intersects of time where there may be more students than just the block-by-block. And so we'll try to get that data in the, in the school board's hands as well. But thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. On to 13.03, update on Cortland High School renovations. Mr. Apprico.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Actually, the previous agenda item is a pretty good segue into the current agenda item. Sean Hockaday, our Director of Maintenance and Facilities Planning, will give a brief update on the status of the Cortland High School renovation project. And this will include a virtual tour of the proposed renovated facility presented by Mr. Beau Fairlam and his associates from BCWH Architects. So, Mr. Hockaday?
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, Dr. Baker. Tonight, we wanted to, I have with me BCWH Architects, Beau Fairlam, and we also have Ally Jarrett and Colin Shirley that are with him as well. Y'all heard tonight about, of course, the, the work that we're planning on or, or want to do at Cortland High School. And we've had previous meetings, previous updates, as well as stakeholder meetings. Tonight, we wanted to kind of bring all that to a finish point. And it's my understanding probably will get us to a place, the last time we presented to you before we bring it back to you after it's gone out to bid. So this is a, a critical time to share the data with you and where the project has, leads us to at this time. Before I start going into the presentation, I do want to make a couple of comments that to get to this point, it's taken a lot of work and it's taken a lot of work by a lot of people. And I just wanted to give recognition to Cliff Conway, as well as Ronnie Lowman at Cortland High School. They have been critical in getting to this part, coordinating meetings, not just with myself and the architects, but we've had a lot of smaller focus group meetings with each department within the school, within, with students of the school. So all of that work has taken a lot on their part to, to put together, and they have been tremendous to work with. All of the staff there has given their time to do so and has given us a lot of good information to, to work with to bring, bring it to this point. I said in our, in my previous update that I, I'm not an architect, so if I, if I don't speak architecturally sound, then forgive me, I don't even know if that's a such thing, but I'm going with it. The, just, there's some places in the, the slide that I will expand further on this, but as we move forward, the timeline for this is approaching very fast. And moving forward, there are some things that will happen pretty rapidly within the next few weeks. I just wanted to go over that briefly, just to make sure people understand that when they see heavy equipment pull up in the next few days. We do have a plan in place, and we have gone through, we've met with the staff, we've met, again, with the principal. There are some areas, flow, traffic flow will change, parent drop-off will change. Some of those things will change pretty rapidly as we need to do so to prepare the site for the modules that we would bring in, for the classrooms that we would evacuate to have during construction. And I'll go over that in more detail, but as we go through the presentation. But I wanted to make that, make everyone aware of that, that there are some changes that will happen pretty quickly. I know that the principal has been reaching out to the community, and he's going to do so throughout the project to let everyone know of the changes before they happen. But I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Also wanted to make it known that we have been working not only with the stakeholder groups, the focus groups, but we've also been working with building department, all the county officials, as well as utilities, to make sure that we're all there up to date and have all the information ahead of time as we work through those challenges and, and let them review everything we have in place and look at the drawings and all that data upfront. And we have submitted site plans to them for not only the, the renovation of the building, but also the work that we'll be doing to put the modules there in place. They've reviewed all of that. So we've worked with them to this date as well. I will let Mr. Fairlam speak and start the slideshow here.
Are we queued up here? Well, well, Mr. Hockaday is pulling that up. I really would also like to reiterate our thanks to our stakeholders committee, to the instructional leadership here at Spotsylvania, to Mr. Conway and his staff, and Mr. Hockaday and his staff. We're architects, we're designers, we love what we do working with educational facilities, but it's the input that we get from you all, from these groups, that really bring life to the design, and they bring meaning to what we're doing. So it's been a fun process, we're excited. As, as Mr. Hockday is saying, we're, we're getting closer and closer to that day where we're going to see the transformation within the school. And we're happy to share some slides and show, show, give you some, some visions of Cortland as we move forward. So to remind you, the image that you see here is the site plan. And, you know, one of the things that we have, have said from the start, one of our goals, has been to have a recognizable front door to the community, have a place that welcomes and invites, but also allows control and enhanced security that brings administration from being embedded within the core of the, of the school and brings it outside to the front. We're talking about a modernization of the school, updating systems, and also updating the site circulation. One of the things that we've been able to do here is to separate bus traffic from the school drop-off zone. As you can see in the front, the new area for the bus drop-off, we've created a interior link to the tech, the Spotsylvania Tech Center over there, which also will serve as a new entrance for sports activities into the gym and also provide a new fitness and wellness room. We are upgrading the fieldhouse, creating a link again back to the school, additional storage area and storage facility, athletic storage. So all those items that are currently stored in our mechanical spaces will stored in our mechanical spaces will move out of the mechanical spaces and into the athletic storage room. We have plans for an ad alternate in our bidding to provide a two-story, six-classroom addition that you see towards the top of the page. So these are some of the images of the renovation. So in the top left-hand corner, you see the new main entry, the new entrance, and this certainly will set, tell everybody where the front door is, and we'll talk about Cortland, and the pride of Cortland and the community. Below that, you'll see the current entrance, which has been repurposed as the bus entry. Again, working with the building envelope in strategic ways. We've got a great building there, it's one that served us well, but we're opening it up in special places to bring in more light into the school, also create that, that entrance that will move students in and out. And to the upper left-hand corner, you see the view of the new athletics entry, which is also forms our link back to the tech center.
Just a couple, a couple notes. One of the topics that Beau spoke of was safety and security, and as we look at the new entrance, that is one of the main factors that we, we looked at in, in doing so. The security and safety is also something that we have to look at during the project, not only after the project is done. So as we go along in the project, we, we will be marking off areas that are construction zones, separate from students, designating flow areas for students that are different, that are separate from construction traffic. We'll be working with the admin there to know what to look for, make sure everybody's badge, make sure everybody has the right identification on. So as we get to our final goal of the completion of the project, and wanting to have the, a secure and safe building, that's also something that we have to face throughout the phase of the project, and we will continue to work on as we, as we do so.
Yeah, and to Mr. Hockaday's point, we've had ongoing conversations with John Lynn, and with Mr. Conway, and Mr. Lohman, all the folks that are on-ground at the school, and also folks that are looking at your security procedures, so that we work to continue to enhance safety and security at the school. So we're going to give you the virtual tour here in a bit, but this is just to refamiliarize you with the axonometric of, of the school plan, and what we're looking at is the, the first floor, and it, towards the bottom of your sheet, you'll see the arrow that indicates the new entrance. We'll be passing through a security vestibule, so that as folks come into the school, that they have to make sure that they have the proper entering credentials, and we can control access during hours. As you move through the school, you'll also see, from a planning standpoint, we have worked hard to create continuous connected circulation routes, so that, so that learning communities are correct, are connected. The administration block has moved from the core of the building to the perimeter, out to the perimeter, so we have admin and guidance there, and we have created an academic science corps within the heart of the building, and you'll get a tour of that later. We've also looked at consolidating the drama and performing arts area. We'll be doing renovations within the auditorium. There will be a suite for special ed with additional instructional space, repurposing the area of the dining commons. Again, all these things to make this a more vibrant, agile, flexible learning community as we move forward. This is a graphic of the second floor. One of the things that you'll notice there is in the open well, where we've introduced a, an open stair to create a link between the first floor and the second floor. Again, improved circulation, improved visibility are things that not only help students get around, but, but it helps with security and safety as well. So the heart of this area is the media commons, this will become the student hub, kind of their zone, it's a, it's a docking space, it is a space to link, to further study, whether it's within the building, in a quiet space, within a maker's space, or going beyond, as we have that ability now to get beyond a room so quickly with a stroke of a keyboard, so.
One of the things that, and you'll hopefully get a better vision for it when we do the virtual tour, but when we showed the images of, of the, the front of the building, and when you see this now where the learning commons or media center or library is, one of the goals was to bring more natural light in the building, and to have that light carry through the building. So the glass that's on the front, also where the stairway is, you have glass above that on the outside, is to give, let that light in more often, let it carry throughout the building further, and to give, let students have, see that and not feel so confined in, in the interior of the building. So that, the pathway on the first floor and the second floor, both do that very well of bringing more natural light into the, to the building. These two, these two areas are not on the virtual tour, so I wanted to kind of cover those, and be a little bit, spend a little more time on those. The image to the right is the new storage building that will be beyond the fieldhouse area. The purpose of that building is for field equipment and also athletic equipment that is currently being stored within the building itself and within the fieldhouse. This freeing up more space there for, in both areas. It's, it's shown as an open building, the idea of this is that we will, we can break this out into different areas for the athletics department to store their equipment in, also field maintenance, the gators and that sort of equipment that the trainer needs will all be stored out there, and that, that building will be conditioned as well. Of course, the building on the left is the fieldhouse. The view that you're looking at is from coming in the, the back doors of, and what the, the students would enter most of the time. We are looking at doing some revamping of this building. Some of the highlights would be, the blue you see there are lockers, we would be expanding, replacing the current lockers, which are the wooden lockers, and hopefully expanding the number of them on both the home and, and guest side. We would be adding more fixtures per the ba, per bathrooms inside the locker rooms themselves. There are currently only two stalls there, we want to get that, raise that number and give more access there. There's a large shower stall on each side now that's currently not being used, so some of that room would be taken up for lockers, and also we will keep one, at least one shower stall on each side if needed to be for the teams. On the public restroom side to the left, we would go through, update those restrooms, the stalls, the fixtures, finishes, all of that would be updated as well. The, the piece to the back that looks somewhat like a triangle is the concession area and also a mechanical area. It's not shown there, but that, the mechanical area is taken up by a very large water heater. Of course, when that building was sized and built, the assumption was that they sized that heater for everyone to take a shower at the same time. Of course, that does not, does not happen, so it's a lot of space taken up, and of course, it's the original equipment to the building, so that will be replaced with a smaller, more efficient heater. This also frees up room for storage. The concessions stand, we'll do work in there to upgrade the cabinets and the, the places that they serve food at. The main two things that the, the building will get is, some of the lighting has been upgraded, but all of the lighting will be upgraded as part of this process with LED, and all the H&amp;B units in the building for heating and ventilation will be replaced as, as far as that. So that, that's kind of a short breakdown of the athletic and fieldhouse buildings. So, I'm going to have to let somebody else drive this.
Yeah, we're going to tell you to hold on tight here and take you through the tour.
All right, good evening. What we're going to do is watch a little video. It's a newer technology we're able to utilize, software-wise, and, and it's really just a video of somebody walking through the space, so we're going to take a look at the areas of the building that are most radically changed from the current layout. So if you, I'm sure you all are someone experienced with the building, so you'll see some areas that are unrecognizable, some areas that you will recognize, and...
And a little disclaimer, the materials and colors have not been finalized, but the spatiality is really what we want you to focus on, and of course, there's a lot of blue because of Cortland's colors, but that's really just there to give you an idea of what we're thinking about for the space.
All right, we can go back to our screen whenever we're ready. All right, Ally, will you hear it?
Sure. All right, so we're approaching the new main entrance. You can see that it's got identity, there's Cortland High School, you know where to go, you know where to walk into, and there's also admin offices, new admin offices on the right there. Walking into the school, when you look over to the right, there's the reception area, so right now, we're in that secure vestibule that you'd have to pass through in order to get into the main school. Now we're walking down main corridor into the heart of the school. Beau had mentioned before that open two-story that you see on the left, we're adding a new stair there to provide connection up to the second floor. And this area, we call Innovation Avenue, it's where we have two new STEM labs, which you can see, I'm kind of looking around right now, and also, this is a common area, there's going to be soft seating, places for collaboration, and kind of breakout areas. Let's see, turning the corner, and there's a little gallery space, the blue you'll see are the little breakout spaces. You know, it's a little jerky.
And here, this is the main path that students would travel as they come off the bus, they'll pass through this more open area with the kind of more interesting, or not interesting, the kind of different types of classrooms with the glass and all these common collaborative commons-type spaces.
And that area we just passed through, we call it the pitch platform, it's where students can get their presentation skills on track and kind of gather during dining. And we just walked up the stairs, we'll go look down, so you can oversee the dining commons from the second floor now, and that experience doesn't exist today. And then now we're approaching the library, which we call the learning commons, there's a lot of flexible furniture in here. As Sean had mentioned, we're bringing daylight into the space, there's maker spaces off to your left, and there's also two open classrooms in there, so you could have class at the same time as students are in there looking at books, so that's an example of one of the classrooms. A lot of low shelving for visibility as well. Then across from that is the marketing, which overlooks the bus loop, there's a lot of glazing in there, and a lot of places for display for marketing projects. Here's an improved corridor, we actually removed the lockers from this corridor, which was a topic we've been discussing today. And now we're back to that overlook, we're going to walk down the stairs into the dining commons. We are providing a variety of furniture within the dining commons, so there's a lot of seating selections, you'll see a, a bench right there, kind of a counter bar where you could potentially sit, and then the school store is there, it's a storefront into the dining commons. And walking through, we're going to now walk back to the consolidated performing arts area, so you'll see down, as we look down here, that's where all of the entrances to those classrooms are, new orchestra room that doesn't exist now, chorus, band, practice rooms, and this is our new link to the SCTC with our new fitness room, which is now on your right, so we're looking into the fitness room. And then this is where you would come in for evening athletics in the gym. And here we are now looking, there's the front of that link.
Does it stop there?
Yep. Sorry for being a little bit jerky, I know that we, we did a run-through with it smooth, but I guess the graphics card on all, you know, can't be the best.
We'll make the video available to you, so that you can play it and, and see it on your computer and, and walk through it, but we're excited about the variety of spaces, the, the total change in terms of improved function and the learning spaces, it's just going to be very exciting.
At the, at the stakeholders meeting, we let Ally and Colin drive through that, and it was kind of at our own speed, so it was a little bit different experience, but we wanted to try to give you some type of other visual other than looking at it on, on paper to try to see what we were trying to describe. As Ally mentioned, as we go through this process, some of the things that haven't been done, and we will keep groups together to, to do so, but things as far as colors, furniture, some of the finishes have not been selected, so we, we will put groups together from the stakeholders committees and others to help us in that process as we go, as we go forward, especially as it relates to the furniture and those, those aspects. The next slide kind of shows a timeline and of, of where we're at and what to expect. Some of the things that we will, you can expect rather quickly, and is, one, I mentioned the modulars that will be coming in for students. That is something that will happen, would have to happen within the next month. The, the goal is to have them there, to be able to move students into and have them up, running and functional, and be able to free that space up once the bid is awarded. In order to get to that point, there's some site work that has to happen, so within, in this coming week, you will start to see some of those changes on site. We would then get, within the next couple of weeks, start running utilities to have those ready for the modulars, the modulars would be set in place, and by that time, we would be, in a month's time, then we would be, start the transition of kids around December and into the first of the year. So as we approach, those are the next big things and next steps to look for. We have been working with our procurement department to put out and do a pre-qualification for contractors on this project. That information is just coming in now, so we will be able to pre-qualify them, make sure that they are, not just the size of the company, but we would look at other things as well. Have they performed jobs like this before, during school, during the school year? We would want to look at the, where they're located, all of those things when we pre-qualify. We will have a mandatory pre-bid conference before we go out, with the, all the bidders before we go out to bid. Once a, and, once the bids come back in, of course, we bring that to you to award the bid, and at that time, before any of the construction on the school starts, after y'all, after you would award the bid, then we would sit down with the contractors and have a pre-construction conference with them at that time. So just some things, major milestones to look forward and look at, and I'll let Beau mention.
Yeah, I think really what we're trying to do here is just kind of take a snapshot of what the next several months look like, as we finish our construction documents and send those out to bid to the contractors. As Sean is saying, there's, there is a whole series of enabling op, op items that are happening now with the introduction of the modulars and getting the utilities set up, because of course, we've got a, a building that will remain occupied as we start construction, we'll need to create swing space by moving folks out of the building into those modulars to create space for the contractor to work. So we'll share with you a phasing plan... So we'll share with you a phasing plan that we have developed in conjunction with maintenance and Sean and his staff, and also with Mr. Conway and the staff at Cortland as well. So what you're seeing here, of course, is kind of the bird's-eye view of the school. The three units that you see off to the left, or excuse me, to the right are the modulators. Two classroom units, which contain 10 classrooms each with a central corridor and toilet facilities, administration space to the front, again, all very much structured to make sure that we are controlling who's coming and going. One of the nice things that's worked out about the phasing here is that, you know, traffic patterns as they exist today are gonna remain, they're familiar, they're gonna remain. The bus loop off, the bus drop, the student parking will remain in the front of the school as you see it there. The area behind the school that is set up for services and deliveries to the cafeteria and to the building, those will be, the school will continue to have access to those spaces. We'll also keep the contractors' workforces, their staging area, their lay-down space to the backside to keep that separate, and then be able to have this shared area up front for the classroom and administrative spaces.
As Beau said, the light blue areas you see on there are the modulators that we'll be installing. Again, these modulators aren't single-classroom modulators. The way it works is they come in and they're stacked together to make one building. So each one of the large rectangles has 10 classrooms. It also has a hallway down the center of it, end to end. It also has two restrooms in each side. They're multi-fиксюр restrooms, so it can handle several people. So they're pretty good-sized buildings. Again, a total of 20 classrooms that we can move at one time, and this allows the, more space inside for the contractor at one time. As Beau also mentioned, the contractor will be using the back lot. We are going to extend the access road that goes down in front of the school and behind those modulators around the end of them. Right now, it looks like the modular sits over top of the access road. We were gonna put a temporary road in at the end of it. That will be blocked off to students, so the students that are coming and leaving the building can't access that road.
One of the things, Ally, I'll just say, you know, you look for opportunities as you go along the process here. So one of the things that we're gonna be able to do in the modular classrooms, we've talked about new learning environments and redesigning the building and spaces, but as important to that, to support the learning environment, is to have agile and flexible furniture. So in these classrooms, in these modulators, we're gonna set up some classrooms and test fit some of the furnishings. We have different desks, chairs, other equipment, other furnishings that we'll be moving in and there, getting feedback from the students, from the instructors, from the teachers, from the administrators, in terms of what they think works best in their classroom. So this is actually an opportunity for us to kind of test drive some stuff and get some good feedback.
With what Beau was saying, as far as the furnishings and furniture goes, sometimes it's not as easy as just replacing furniture in a classroom. There is some professional development that needs to go into that. If you take the standard way that desks and chairs have looked for the last 30 years, and you change that one day, and the teacher's not ready for that change. There has to be some learning on the, from instructional side for them to know how to use what they have. So as we set up new classrooms and we work that direction, we want to make sure that we're giving them functional furniture, but we also want to make sure that we're setting up classrooms that staff is ready for or that is learning how to use as well. The graphs in front of you kind of show some of the phasing. One of the things we have tried to do is do one floor over the other, or stack phasing, meaning that everything that's done on one side of the building kind of gets done on one side at a time or an area at a time. This works better for HVAC, plumbing, electrical, most of those things that are feeding one floor feed the second, so it's an easier route. One thing I will say about that is we're, as we install the new HVAC system, we're leaving one totally functional, installing a new one. So you have two there at one time, and we kind of dismantle the old one as we install the new one, so.
Yeah, so what you see, this is the first phase. The first phase will start in January and run through December of 2018. We will also take advantage of our summer to do work in areas like the cafeteria and other spaces that we can't access during the academic year. But the vision would be that after the course of Phase 1, the areas that you see in blue will have been totally renovated, we'll then shift over to Phase 2 and then do the other areas of the building. So as Sean was saying, there's an advantage to make a job as efficient as you can and attractive to a contractor. You want to give them as much space as they can to work into, but you need to be able to control it as well. The academic mission of Cortland High School is the most important thing, the students, the educators, the administration. So it takes a thoughtful planning process to do that. We will, in our contract documents, we will identify days where standardized testing is happening, for example, and say, there can't be any work, anything that would go on that would distract during those timeframes. So the purpose of the school, or the continuance of the school as an educational facility, is the most important process. But they also have to work hand in hand, and it can be exciting. It's exciting if you're in the school and you're seeing progress being made, you're seeing that new space come online. So we're excited by that and how that will work. The little red arrows you see there are the thoughts in terms of how circulation will happen during those phases, because it's important to know that we'll have students that'll be moving in the building and to the modulators at certain timeframes and during class changes. So it's important, as a visitor comes, that they are then directed also to the administration modular, and that we create some boundaries and barriers around that space so that people that don't belong aren't in there. Construction stays in construction zones, school goes on within the school. So the area that you see now in green is Phase 2, which would be January through September of 2019. The darker green areas will go through the whole time, that whole timeframe, and the areas that you see in the lighter shade of green there are work that's envisioned during the summer. During that summer, you'll note that the auditorium and the fine arts space will be renovated. The auditorium will be a challenging piece to try to accomplish during a summer. We've said this with our stakeholders group, we've shared this as we've gone off, because we're gonna make that stage accessible. It currently isn't accessible, so there'll be an accessible route from the audience to the stage. We will renovate the sound system and the lighting and the stage area, the stage curtain. So those things, that may push a little bit past that fall date, but we have some flexibility there. You have to look for where those flexible frames are, or slots are, so you can make adjustments as you need to. But again, the red areas that you see there are the links. We're really excited about having worked with Megan and the folks at the tech center in terms of creating this enclosed link to let students go back and forth, the opportunity of creating a fitness room, health and fitness room there, and a new entrance into the athletic center. So, you know, there's gonna be just a wonderful transformation, and there's some great opportunities I think we're taking advantage of.
One of the things that Beau mentioned was testing, and one of the things we've looked at during this is to have a area at vocational to where they, Cortland can use it as a testing center. So if they, as if they need a classroom that can always be used as a testing center, they can always have use of that. There are some areas that we can't put in the modular, the art rooms, for example, are one of those areas. Right now, there's a shop class where they will eventually become part of the fine arts, but until then, we're gonna move the art classes into there through the first phase. Once that first phase gets done, they'll take use of their new area, and then when the second phase comes in, it will become part of the fine arts area. So there is some areas that are gonna get moved around, but I think with working with the staff there, I think we have a pretty good plan on how to move forward.
So we like, we like to say the future looks bright at Cortland.
We, that pretty much closes out the presentation of, we wanted to give you as much information as we could, but we also wanted to keep it, not get too lengthy. So at this time, any questions, we'll take.
Ms. Blalock?
I'm excited to hear that the auditorium will be made accessible. That's something that's kind of near and dear to my heart. With that in mind, did you have stakeholder representation of people with disabilities, people who utilize wheelchairs? And did you carry that through to the student experience that we saw in that video? For example, the presentation space caught my eye as a three-step space, so that is automatically not usable by somebody who is in a wheelchair unless you're planning to build a ramp.
Yes.
So did you have stakeholder representation for that? And are there other enhancements that you could just mention real quick?
Yes, Pam. One of the, one of the goals in the construction of this and updating the building is to bring everything in the building up to ADA. Currently, it's not, and that's one of the, one of the main goals, and when we got to areas like bathrooms and that sort of thing. I don't believe we had anybody on the committee, but we did, we have gone through very lengthy talks through co-compliance in ways we can address that in all areas of the building, not just restrooms, but as far as access to the stage or access to platforms or whatever it may be. It's something that we've looked at throughout the building. Some of the areas that we, things may not show, but they, all areas that will be ADA, we have looked at also some things. For instance, in the handicap spaces of restrooms, we've also looked at the suite we were building for the, for those students, integrating things such as changing tables and that sort of thing that aren't there now. So I think all aspects of the building will be covered as far as that goes.
I'm very glad to hear that. I think when you start thinking about things like furniture and classroom setup, you have a unique opportunity to incorporate folks who have, you know, direct experience. ADA compliance is obviously very important, but when you see a presentation like this and you get a sense of the student's experience, you want to make sure that everybody has an enhanced experience as well, not just co-compliance. So thank you so much for the work that you've already done with that, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I've been on the board representative on this committee from the very inception, and been honored that Dr. Meyer has been able to join me after Ms. Blalock left, and I am really appreciative of the hard work that you all have done, and not only presenting us with a briefing today where we can actually see with our own eyes what the finished product's gonna look like, but taking in all the input from all stakeholders to share their, what they believe Cortland High School should be as a learning environment. I just want to say thank you on behalf of my fellow board members and myself for the hard work. And I also know that now that the plan has been conceived, we have to be very vigilant in executing the plan. And so, Mr. Akadé, I want to thank you for your hard work and your continued hard work on this project. And I also want to thank you for ensuring, at least for this board member's edification, that our building is gonna be first-rate, and it's also gonna have first-rate athletic facilities that are congruent with it. So I want to thank you for your hard work, and especially for our architects for allowing us to put our, put some bones, if you will, on our vision, and I thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell, and thank you for the opportunity to be part of this committee and the work. I've been really enjoyed and thrilled to see what has been planned. Cortland High School is gonna be unique, it's gonna be very exciting. I think our students, our staff, and our patrons will definitely be very appreciative of everything. I know we're gonna have two years of a lot of hard work, and it's gonna take a lot of good communication to bring everybody and keep everybody informed, you know, as we go through this process, because two years is a long time when you're doing this. But I think you have a very good team, and I know that, you know, I'm very appreciative because I know BCWH has worked on many, many projects with this school division, and all have been renovation work, and definitely has shown the skill to do this. And I'm looking forward to, you know, two years from now, we can sit here, and I think in two months or come December 11th, you will bring to us hopefully a very good bid that we can, as a board, act and award, and come January, you know, the contract will begin. I think it's important to say also that in the next several days, work will already begin, so that parents are informed. It's not just come January, there's a lot of preparation work that has to be done, prep work, in order for the contractor to have a place to do his work. And so for the parents out there, work will begin most probably tomorrow or the day after, and you may be seeing some very big front-end loader equipment and things like that, because that site work has to begin, trees will have to come down, space made available, so that we can have that modular component in place. And so it's important for the parents to realize that things are beginning. It's not just, will it be done? It'll be done in the future. No, it will be starting in the next several days. So, and I think it's just a very, very exciting time for Cortland High and that community, that school with dates back to, what, '78, '80? And so it is, that was a Gould architect project at that time.
Yes, it was.
And so it has its dates, and it's time for its renovation. I'm really, really thrilled and pleased that we can bring Cortland High School into the 21st century with an A1 rated facility. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you for the presentation. And even though that video was a little jumpy, very cool. I really appreciate that. Just kind of give us an idea of what it's gonna look like. I want to first say thank you for looking at our student safety. The traffic pattern for where, because one of my questions was gonna be, how are the students gonna go from inside to the modulators? But you answered that, so thank you for that. I also appreciated that the construction people and the equipment are on the other side where there won't be no students and having their own entrances, that all, student safety first, and I appreciate that. The idea of the test furniture, that's awesome, because, I mean, I know it's gonna have more collaborative spaces, which we're not used to. So being able to test that out in the modulators, I think it's a great idea. a great idea. And I like that we'll be able to get, use the students' feedback. So thank you. A lot of forward thinking. So y'all are doing a great job. One thing I did not hear, and I was just wondering, kitchen renovations. Is there any kind of renovation happening in the kitchen, the cafeteria lines? Just wondering about that.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, both cafeteria lines and the kitchen itself. The, if you're familiar with the way it looks now, it'll be much more open. We're actually, we'll have, install a third line. So the students can have more option to that. We're also, the, the sandwich area that they have outside in the cafeteria now, we're also moving that to the other side of the cafeteria, within its own room, with its own roll-down window. So it moves some of those students from near the serving line now to the other side to make available better flow through that area. We've also been working with our food service vendor, getting input from them. We, some of the equipment inside of the kitchen itself is going to be updated as part of this. They, we have a window in the area there now that was set up originally for dishwashing, which is not used. So we're going to reclaim that space. That's one of the areas that we'll use as a, one of the new serving lines. The, there's some renovation that will happen on the, the backside of that space where, where the pantry area is now. So the kitchen itself does get some remodeling done as, as part of this.
Madam Chair, to my understanding, we really don't need to take any formal action other than move on, move ahead, because it's going to come back to us. They're going to have to do the pre-qual of the general contractor, and that comes back. And then we have the actual bid documents to award, the awarding of the bid come December. So two more steps will come back to the board.
Correct. We can move on.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item 14.01. Ms. Gaines, can we discuss budget amendment number four, approval of FY 2017 proposed operating carryover uses?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present several budget requests. Staff is pleased to share that we have closed out the books for 2017. In doing so, the division has 1.3 million in operating carryover. When you look at the 1.3 million, this amount represents 0.5% of the 245 million in operating revenues. Several key points to remember about carryover. Number one, these funds can only be used for one-time expenses. Last year, you will recall that we held back $1 million from departments and schools due to state reneging on their portion of the 2% pay raise. We had to take these precautions, but the beauty of it is that we can return these funds back to the schools and departments if you determine that tonight. Number three, it is not a best practice to have carryover of carryover. Therefore, these funds must be spent by June 30th. Now, we can only expend these funds if you approve them, and if they are appropriated by the board of supervisors. And finally, you will recall, when developing the budget for 2018, over $2 million was cut. So we truly do have needs before you this evening. So I will draw your attention to your cover sheet. In looking at your cover sheet, you will see 1.3 million of requests. Every one of the requests that you see are for students. When you look at the Commonwealth Governor's School supplies of 1811, this is basically for supplemental reading materials and classroom calculators. Virtual schools expenses, these funds were collected last year and must be returned back to the program to be used for our students. PBIS coaches training. Here, we're looking at a number of things in terms of various classroom modules, walkthroughs, and implementation snapshots. Also, you will see textbooks, third and fourth grade, AP World and AP Geography. Keep in mind, when you look at textbooks, a couple things. Number one, when our budget was developed prior to 2009, the textbook budget used to be over a million dollars. But with the recession, these funds were no longer available. Therefore, what we had to do, we had to reallocate funds accordingly. Therefore, the true source now for any textbooks really is one-time carryover. You will see $100,000 for professional learning. When looking at the professional learning, you have a combination of things. We're looking at outside speakers, focusing on how to teach teachers, and opportunities to respond to feedback. STEM training for Cortland High School. You also, again, curriculum materials, high school testing support, school-based allocations. Many of the schools last year, all of them, had deducted from their budget 5%. So we're looking to return 5,000 back to elementary schools, 10,000 back to middle schools, and 15,000 back to high schools. You would also see safety needs, new security cameras, two-way radios, et cetera. You will also see restricted grant funds, thrill ride for our students. And on the next page, you will see high school athletic transportation costs, $50,000. By way of next steps, if this request is approved tonight, it will go to the county administration on tomorrow. It will be presented to the county's finance committee on October 19th, and then it will go to the board of supervisors on November 28th for appropriation. So in total, 1.3 million. 1.1 instruction, 122,000 technology, 2350 administration, and 50,000 transportation. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Gaines? Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the as recommended.
I will second that.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the recommended action, second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried seven zero. Ms. Gaines and Mr. Zakari, would you like to discuss budget amendment number five?
Yes. And Mrs. Zakari is joining me at this time. Again, with us closing our books for 2017, the CIP Roll Forward Fund balance is 544,653. This is 2% of the 26.8 million budget. So staff at this time is recommending three areas. Number one, hardware for voice over IP, $300,000. Licenses for voice over IP, $94,322. And then 150,000 for Munis HR payroll implementation, training and support. This particular item does not require appropriation as the funds have already been appropriated last year. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the budget amendment, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? Dr. Meyer?
On the voice over IP hardware, where is that anticipated to be used?
It's actually going to cover the entire division. It's part of the project. So we're looking to change the phone system throughout the entire school division.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. Ms. Gaines and Mr. Upperco, would you like to discuss with us budget amendment number six?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Upperco. And looking here at the approval of FY 18, debt service savings. With the bonds being sold, the school division is saving 696,051. Staff is proposing the following. $20,000 for administration, public information 10,000, human resources 7,000, and finance 3,000. Public information, their funds will be used for supplies needed for the print shop and for school print jobs. Human resources, recruiting and retention initiatives, as well as professional learning. For the finance department, filing cabinet and professional development. Transportation, 133,000. Ahead Start transportation bus, as well as chairs and tables for the bus aide and bus driver training room. Replacement of broken office chairs, shelving for the storage building for the transportation department. The shelving will be used for Head Start car seats. Maintenance, 543,051. For state-of-the-art furniture, for the classrooms, and for safety needs. So the total here is 696,051. And these are one-time funds, and they do not require appropriation as they've already been appropriated, and it would just be a categorical transfer.
I will move the recommended action.
Motion by Mr. Blaine, and a second by Ms. Palmer to approve the debt service saving uses proposed. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
I just have one question. Under transportation, it says bus drivers and aides, and 32 replacement of broken office chairs. Really? 32 chairs broken? How? I mean, explain that. I don't understand that.
The, the training room is, all the equipment and all the furniture in the training room is original equipment from when the building was first constructed, and I believe it's like 2008. Is that correct? And yeah, really, there's 32 chairs that have needed repair and, or are now beyond repair. That's a pretty large room, and it's kind of critical to the needs of training our bus drivers, our attendants. It's also used for our nurses. Our supervisor of health services uses that facility as well, when she does training as well. So.
Thank you for shedding some light on that subject.
Yeah, I know it looks kind of suspicious maybe at first, but trust me, we need the chairs.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On the 14.04, Ms. Gaines and Mr. Mudd, would you like to tell us about budget amendment number seven?
Yes, thank you for joining me, Mr. Michael Mudd. In looking at our Head Start program, we had the opportunity to apply for a grant, and we were successful in receiving it. It's a one-time supplemental funding in the amount of 225,632. This funding will be used for two school buses, and they will be purchased from Sunny Merriman. These funds, if approved, will be appropriated by the board of supervisors, and we'll be presenting it to their next meeting. The budget category is transportation. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to approve the Head Start grant funds.
I will second it.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
I just want to congratulate Head Start and Ms. Dawn Miller for the hard work that she always does for Head Start. Hooray, Dawn.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And we can move on to Mrs. Gaines in budget amendment number eight, approval of bond issuance cost adjustment.
Yes. Now that the bonds have been sold, we're responsible for paying the bond issuance cost. That amount is 185,203. These funds were previously appropriated by the board of supervisors on September the 12th.
We have a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
Ms. Gaines, I just have a quick question. So we have to pay 185,000, but is that from, we also, is that the selling of the debt service? So we're getting money out of it as well?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So no additional cost above and beyond the CIP funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Gaines, would you stay with us for 14.06 and discuss our FY 19 budget dates?
Thank you. Staff has begun to gear up for the 2019 budget season. And what we're proposing this evening is a cancellation of the budget work session that was scheduled for November the 6th. Instead, we want to meet on November 27th. And at this meeting, several things will occur. Number one, you will hear a presentation on the proposed 2019, 2023 CIP budget. Staff will also bring to you a report on lapse funding, as well as ADM. Also, the work session on November 27th, we'll bring to you the additional budget dates for your approval. Staff is also recommending that you add to your calendar a joint work session with the board of supervisors on November 28th to hear the FY 17 CAFRA audit results. And then finally, to have your pre-budget hearing on January the 8th, 2018 at 6:30.
I move the recommended action.
Mr. Blaine moves to approve the recommended budget dates.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
I just have a quick question about the pre-budget, the public hearing. For January 8th, and then when would the presentation, the superintendent's presentation of the budget be?
It's tentatively scheduled for January the 29th, and it will be part of all of the dates that the board will approve on the 27th. It's the last Monday of that month.
And I just want to make, I know we have enough time between the public hearing and the presentation. I'm just checking the law, and I figured you guys know the law. So, all right, good. Thank you.
We actually scheduled the pre-budget public hearing later than we have in the past, so that it is more informed by what the governor's budget and where we seem to be going, as well as we'll be a little bit further along in terms of our own budget planning.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. Mr. Upperco, would you like to join us for 14.07, approval of non-exclusive permanent sidewalk and drainage easement?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know you're getting tired of me, so I'll make it quick. Members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Spotsylvania County Utilities is managing a project called the Transportation Alternatives Program, and it's designed to add sidewalks to the Spotsylvania County courthouse area and tie things together there. As part of that effort, Spotsylvania County is requesting the school board grant a non-exclusive permanent sidewalk and drainage easement for the installation, maintenance, operation, and repair of sidewalk facilities. This would be in front of Robert E. Lee Elementary School. And I provided drawings that I hope you were able to kind of look at before and see exactly where it's going to be. It's actually going to be right in front of the school, where there's sort of a, a rolling ditch, for lack of a better way of saying it, on Brock Road. In addition, Spotsylvania County is offering compensation in the amount of 742.81 to the school division for this easement. The easement is deemed beneficial to all parties, has been vetted through the school board attorney, and consequently, we recommend that the board approve the easement as presented.
We have a motion to approve the easement as presented?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Upperco. Mr. Lynn, would you like to come forward for 14.08, first reading approval of revisions to policy EBB? first reading approval of revisions to policy EBB?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 9.1-184, Paragraph A10, the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety under the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services developed and provided model policies and procedures to help school boards, local school boards, establish and operate threat assessment teams to support their schools. Policy EBB and Regulations EBBR1 and EBBR2 have been revised in accordance with recent changes directed by law and by the model policy and procedures provided by the state agency mentioned above. The changes were composed and reviewed by the Division School Safety Committee, the Division Threat Assessment Committee, and all changes have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel. Administration's recommendation is that the school board approves for first reading the proposed revisions to EBB, EBBR1, and EBBR2.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the first reading approval of revisions to policy EBB. Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? Ms. Palmer?
Quick question. I noticed in one place, students was changed to individuals, but in another place, it was kept as students. Is there a reason that we talk about individuals in one section and students in another?
Yes, ma'am. The, what we are responding to was, was the big change in legislation and in the state's guide to us, and the significant change was using the term individuals. So what we had to do was, was to be careful when we revised our policy and our regulation where some of our procedures were very specific to students and not just individuals, that we had to say specifically students rather than individuals. So we had to be very careful that we use the right terminology.
So the revisions that went from student to individuals just broadened in some areas, but others you needed to be specific for students?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
And we are on to 14.09, to approve the school board advisory committee and its appointees. So now that the temporary school board advisory committee has developed a mission statement and a procedure in the organizational meetings, and now that we have all the nominees, now it is time to appoint the nominees and officially create the committee as per the second part of the policy. So we've fulfilled the first part of the policy to have the organizational meetings, and now we're going to officially make the advisory committee official with its nominees now appointees. So if we can have a motion to do that?
I will so move that we make the permanent appointment for the school board advisory committee.
Motion by Mr. Blaine to approve the school board advisory committee and its appointees.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion?
Will you provide us names, addresses, et cetera, who sponsored these people so that we have them?
It was supposed to be attached in the agenda, but it can be.
Okay.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
By me, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to commend you for initiating this. I think this is going to turn out to be a very excellent addition to the knowledge that we have available to work with in making decisions.
Thank you very much. On to 15.01, unfinished business. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of board meetings ago, I made mention of a competition for an iron chef competition, and I just wanted to get an idea of when we would be able to receive a briefing as to if and when we can implement a program of an iron chef and approximately when that would be accomplished, if we could, and what kind of evaluation criteria would be looked at.
Good evening, everybody. The competition that you've mentioned, this is a collaborative effort with food services, as well as what we might be able to provide over at SETC. So we're still exploring that as an option for hopefully sometime in the spring, if we're able to get it off the ground. But potentially, that's where we're at at this point. Okay, thanks.
Any other unfinished business? Hearing no more unfinished business. On to 15.02, new business. Is there any? Dr. Meyer?
I would like to request that at our next meeting for November, before we go to the Williamsburg Conference, we need to have the delegate assembly handbook, the 10 amendments come to this board for approval so that either yourself or Ms. Shelley, as the delegate and alternate, can vote representing the wishes of the school board. So we need to bring that handbook. But it's not 120-some pages, just the amendment section. I think it's 10 amendments, if I remember correctly, to bring that composite to us at our next meeting for approval as an action item. I don't think this requires any action here, but just for follow-up. Dr. Martin knows what we're talking about.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to have the board consent to look into the cost of other extracurricular activities that our students engage in specifically BAN. I've been talking to some constituents, and the cost of BAN is a full-time labor of love for parents that want their children to have the opportunity to participate. My concern is that the cost could actually be prohibitive for some children that would want to be able to participate but cannot because of the economic cost. And then even those that have the opportunity or their parents have the means to do it, it is a substantial strain on their families. And we understand that, you know, there's always going to be some form of fundraising involved with BAN. But now, with the amount of time that's spent throughout their high school career, just fundraising just to be able to get uniforms and do a variety of other things that they do, to just look at ways to find out, one, what is the actual burden on them? And then, if the division, is there any ideas or ways that we could probably alleviate or try to make the flight of those students a little bit easier?
Any more new business? Okay, hearing no more new business. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Shelley. Second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.